Jennifer, are you ready tonight? You are? All right, then, I'd like to call the March twenty seventh meeting of the governing body to order. Madam Clerk, would you take role?
Dr. Rennie.
President.
Mr. Royball. Mr. Seagrave.
President.
Mr. White.
President.
Dr. Aldridge.
Present.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Escobar.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
And Mr. Labor. One member is absent, we do have a corner.
Wonderful, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is number four consent agenda. All items listed, all agenda items listed with a designation of C A are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
All right, is there any items a member of this governing body would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
I'd like to discuss nineteen D. That's gymnastics contract.
Concur.
All right, nineteen D has been removed. Anybody else? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. White, seconded by Dr. Aldridge. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Consent agenda is approved with number nineteen Delta removed.
Number six ordinance on third reading annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming tracks of land situated in portions of Sunnyside addition and Sunnyside addition second filing. Section twelve township thirteen north range sixty seven west of the six P M Laramie County, Wyoming generally located east of Bridge Road between Charles Street and Pershing Boulevard. West of Wills Road between Cheyenne, Cheyenne Street and Pershing Boulevard and northeast of the intersection of Pershing Boulevard and Wills Road.
All right, this is the final step in our first five of the county initiated county pocket annexations. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to that annexations? All right, hearing none, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading and I so move.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments for members of the governing body? Hearing none, madam clerk.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Royball.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escobar.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
This ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number seven ordinance on third reading amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne changing the zoning classification from county M U mixed use to M U B mixed use business emphasis and C B community business. For tracks of land situated in portions of Sunnyside addition and Sunnyside addition second filing. Section twelve township thirteen north range sixty seven west of the six P M Laramie County, Wyoming generally located east of Bridge Road between Charles Street and Pershing Boulevard. West of Wills Road between Cheyenne Street and Pershing Boulevard and northeast of the intersection of Pershing Boulevard and Wills Road.
All right, these are the necessary zone changes for the land we just annexed. Is there anyone here in the audience like to speak to those zone changes? Hearing none, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments for members of the governing body? Hearing none, madam clerk, the votes please.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Dr. Rennie. Mr. Royball. Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
And Mr. Escobar.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Number eight ordinance on second reading annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming land location west of Southwest Drive, south of I eighty.
All right, this is an owner requested annexation. Mr. Hornick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ben Hornock, owner of T C Solutions. I own the adjacent property and I, I sent a letter out to the members of the committee earlier today to just ask for this to be backed up just a hair. So per state statutes and I, and I appreciate your response, Mr. Mayor, your quick response to this, but as I read the state statute, it seems to me that, that the landowner qualification dealing with this particular annex also should include those properties within a half mile of the new border of the city essentially after this annex is completed. So I, I included with my letter a the certified mailing response and it only basically had the land, the current landowner plus the public utilities that were involved in this. So what I am asking to do is actually just to go back, look at this and then restart this application process again because I did receive the notice and, and it's actually the next item on the agenda. I did receive the notice for the zone change, which is part of this process. That was the first I was clued into what was going on with the annexation. So you know, I'm just asking that that be backed up a little bit because of, and like I said in my letter, because of the state statute that references the definition of what a landowner is per fifteen one four oh one. And I know that that you, you did respond with, with some comments and I appreciate the comments, but I think that because the city does have some delegated functions within that half mile boundary outside of the city in this particular area. Namely, we've got, there's a two oh one agreement that we have with, that the city has with the county. There's emergency services agreements, there's probably other utility agreements, there's probably, you know, I don't know, various other agreements the city has with pertaining to this particular area within the city. So, so in my opinion, it would trigger then the need to include those other landowners that are, that are within half mile of the new the new boundary that, that's being proposed.
So Mr. Hornick, is it your concern that you did not get notice and that, and that's why we should back up?
Correct, yes, yes.
So I would just share with you, I don't agree with your analysis, but also the analysis says the folks who would newly come into the half mile. Not that we have to rekeep renoticing them, once you're within that half a mile, we don't have to notice you a second time. You've been within a half a mile for a very long time and so you're not newly brought into the area. So for two reasons, I think you're wrong on your definition of a landowner. And also the law says that will be, will be brought into an area within a half mile. You've been within a half mile for I would guess at least fifteen. I'm trying to remember when we annexed Southwest Drive, Seagrave, if you remember that or not. There you go. So close to twenty years, you've been within a half a mile of the city boundary. So you'd have to meet that, that criteria and for that reason, sir, I just don't think we need to back up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned new, could you explain the, the new part of, of your?
Madam Attorney, could you read that, that site in fifteen one? Four oh one, I believe, when it defines a landowner?
Mr. Mayor, through you, Stephanie Boster, Cheyenne City Attorney, under fifteen one four oh one, under the definition of landowner.
Yes, ma'am.
Says, states landowner shall include persons owning property which comma as a result of the proposed annexation would then be brought within one half mile of the corporate limits of a city which has exercised the authority granted under Wyoming State Statute fifteen three two oh two B two.
And have we annexed or have we exercised fifteen one? Fifteen two with three or whatever it is?
Mr. Mayor, we have.
We've, we've exercised that?
Not under this situation, no. So fifteen three two oh two B two, it would not come into effect, my apologies.
Mr. Mayor, I do have Shane Hanson, he would like, has his hand raised, I believe he's the representative for the applicant.
Ms. Hornick, could be okay if we take that phone call, why can you stand right there? Just, he may have, he may have something to add to this conversation. Mr. Hanson?
Good evening, Shane Hanson, Style Surveying Services. I'm not sure what state statute he's referencing, I'm not familiar with that. I just want to state that we have met all the criteria of the application as requested by the city and I believe that we are in our right to have this approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Ms. Hornick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I'm not doubting that Style Survey has done their due diligence nor that the city has not gone through the procedures that they know of. What, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is that this is sort of an accidental oversight because as I read the definition of what a landowner is, if the city is annexing a piece of property, is, is annexing anything, whatever distance, then the landowners within that new distance then have to be notified within the half mile of that new distance.
But there's a, there's a second part to that, would you agree? What, what is, what is the law say? Read it again, please.
Mr. Mayor, fifteen one four oh one subsection two definition of landowner. That's landowner shall include persons owning property which as a result of a proposed annexation would then be brought within one half mile of the corporate limits of the city which has exercised the authority granted under Wyoming Statute fifteen three two oh two B two.
And Ms. Hornick, we've not exercised that. So if you go back to the front, first part of that definition, it basically says a landowner is, well, I, I'm going to repeat it, we'll just have the attorney read it.
Mr. Mayor, so the landowner shall include persons owning property which as a result of proposed annexation would then be brought within one half mile of the corporate limit.
No, the first part of that, ma'am, yeah, the actual definition.
Okay, at the beginning of fifteen four four oh one two, landowner is defined as the owner of a property in the territory, territory proposed to be annexed who in the last calendar year was liable for a property tax therein or was exempt by law from payment of taxes on the property.
So a landowner by definition is the folks who are inside the area to be annexed unless we've exercised our jurisdiction outside of that and then we would have to do it differently, but we have not done that. I, I appreciate your comments, sir, but I respectfully would disagree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess my argument would be that, that, that has been done through other side methods such as the two oh one.
The law is very clear, it's, it's fifteen three two oh two B two, I believe it is. And if you read that section of the law, we have not exercised that. So the fact that we've done other things has no bearing, in my opinion, or our attorney's opinion on whether or not you are a landowner or not a landowner. You are not a landowner and because of that, we do not have to give you notice until July first of twenty twenty three, when the bill that I went and testified for requires us to give notice to everybody within three hundred feet of an area being annexed, in which we're very happy to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do respectfully disagree. My, my, as I read the state statute, I do believe that the city does does meet those qualifications and they do have other agreements that then would necessitate the need to notify those landlords within the half mile to new boundary. And so, you know, but I, I'm just asking that the, the process basically start again with a new, you know, to, to send out the certified mailing to those landowners within the half mile boundaries. So basically just back up to the starting point of this again and, and.
Ms. Hornick, I'd be interested to know what purpose that would do. I mean, they were, everybody within three hundred feet got a notice that an annexation and zone change were happening because we're required to do that under our zone change rules. So notice was given, so you know, because you got that same notice. So why, why would we want to do that? I mean, everybody who needs to know, what purpose would that, what, what purpose would that fix?
I, I'm not saying it's going to fix a purpose. What I, I think part of the intent of, of the way the statute's kind of written is that and, and I think it's, it's part of what the government, any government entity should be cons, you know, considerate of, is that they sort of go above and beyond to meet any requirements and, and granted this, this statute, you know, legislators write laws that are about as clear as our skies were this morning. So, you know, it, it's kind of a, a little bit, you know, I understand the, the difference of, of interpretation, but I think that it is, it would be incumbent upon any government agency to kind of go above and beyond to, to at least make sure they're, they're trying their best to meet the, the, the letter of the law.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. Bloom.
Mayor, members of council, Charles Bloom, planning and development director. Just want to note one thing, that property, it appears to have been within a half mile of the city limits since nineteen seventy four. That was based on some quick research on where the city limits have been historically. So it's been within the half mile for quite some time. Secondly, that reference as, as Mr. Hornock mentioned, legislation is usually very unclear and in which you, Washington, there's some weird things that happen. Back in two thousand thirteen, there was a House Bill, House Bill eighty five, which essentially addressed a city's ability to adopt that extraterritorial control within one half mile of city limits. That used to be housed in different language in fifteen dash three dash two oh two B two and that has subsequently been changed. But what that half mile authority is, it's not agreements, it's not two oh one I G A, it's not outside users agreement. It is when the city would enact an ordinance to exercise their police power or their zoning and all the regulations within that one half mile buffer. We as the city of Cheyenne have not done that. I mean, we, we have not enacted that power. So the discussion here tonight is irrelevant to the situation regarding this specific landowner petition to annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
I, Mr. Bloom, I have a question. Just what would be the impact on the timeline if we actually did comply with Mr. Hornock's request and start this process all over?
Mayor, through you to council member Rennie, the impact would require new notice, which would have a fiscal cost on the city for, well, two things, if we did every property within a half mile, which is not interpreted, that's a new interpretation I haven't heard, that would have a pretty significant cost for mailing that notice at about five dollars plus per envelope for everyone within a half mile of the annexation. Time wise, there is a twenty business day requirement which translates into about, I mean, it's just over five weeks. So it would create a delay for the applicant. We would have to hold another public hearing again and the, the applicant would be delayed probably about, by about two months.
Okay, and just so that the other members of the committee know, Mr. Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Bloom, the reason for this request for annexation is that their sewer system has, has failed and they need to hook up to the city sewer, is that correct?
Mayor, through you to members of the council and council member Rennie, that is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Mike White, I have a question kind of regarding what Dr. Rennie was saying. If I'm understanding this right, the reason for some of the annexation was the sewer. But I asked the mayor in regards as the best way I can ask the question in respect to him. Do the city consider any type of water and sewer under chapter forty four without getting into the annexation anymore? Do we allow that through the Board of Public Utilities through their rules to get sewer and water without being annexed? And that's just a question, being as diplomatic as I can be because I know it's been done many times before. So if you wouldn't mind answering that question or if you can't answer tonight, it would be okay for me to answer.
I think the answer to your question, sir, is, is that properties who have a infrastructure emergency like a failed water system or something like that, that need water and are not eligible for annexation on humanitarian reasons, this governing body many times has offered outside water and sewer agreements. But properties that are eligible for annexation, typically we don't offer that, we just ask them to come into the city limits.
But was the reason for annexation just because the applicant needed the sewer repaired or just wanted sewer and water and didn't need anything else from the city?
See the applicant here, so I don't know that we can answer that specifically, sir. Okay, I was told that he has some development plans for that piece of property and needs, needs a sewer. Okay, thank you. Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, Shane Hanson has his hand raised again as a, for the developer.
Ms. Hanson.
Yes, the main reason for him coming in is through you, Mr. Mayor, is, is because he needs a sewer repair, but he does have intent of putting a, some kind of a pole barn on that property as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Anybody else want to talk about this ordinance for annexation on second reading? Nobody else from the audience? All right, Mr. Cook, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. We have any comments for members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
Going back to my questioning, questions for our planning director, as we were told, adding a pole barn isn't really develop, developing the property, it's probably adding an amenity, so. But the rationale for the request and it was, this isn't a forced annexation, they requested to come into the city is because they have a failing sewer system. And and they need, they need that service. It seems to me, although Mr. Hornock has, has raised some questions, it seems our city attorney is satisfied that and our planning director are satisfied that we have complied with the law such as it reads now. I understand it was changed in July, but currently we're in compliance with the law. The only thing that backing up would serve would be to delay them up to two months from getting the sewer, sewer system or hookup that they need. So to me, it seems like we ought to support this.
Thank you, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the annexation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading, next item, please.
Number nine ordinance on second reading amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne changing the zoning classification from county L R low density residential to L R low density residential for land located west of Southwest Drive, south of I eighty.
All right, this is the zone change for the piece of property that we just talked about and by law, we have to give it a city zone so it can be developed. Is there anybody in the audience want to speak to that? Hearing none, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments for members of the governing body on the zone change? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The zone change is approved on second reading.
Item ten ordinance on second reading repealing and recreating code provisions prohibiting drug paraphernalia as specified and amending section nine point two zero point zero two zero narcotics and drugs of chapter nine point two zero controlled substances of title nine. Public peace and welfare of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming to eliminate municipal prohibitions governing marijuana.
Well, I guess I missed an exciting meeting on Wednesday because I had a different meeting to go to, but because we had so many people come and testify, we're going to limit testimony today to two minutes. And Ms. Hornick, if you're going to get us started, let's do that. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll kick it off. My name's Ben Hornock, I'm, I'm the House Representative for District forty two. And first of all, I do want to thank the, the, the committee of the whole that made sure public comment was heard. They went overboard to hear public comment and that, that was much appreciated. So, you know, thank you for that and thank you for taking the time to, to hear all that public comment. I have two, two areas that I think this is, this ordinance change is problematic for the city that I just want to mention. First of all, I, I believe that it is, it would be required in this situation that the state or at the federal level address this prior to the city. This is illegal in the state of Wyoming, it's illegal nationally. And so by enacting an ordinance here within the city of Cheyenne, I, I actually don't think that that the, the city could do something like that. It would, it would kind of be going around in a back door and I don't, I don't believe that, that's part of the city's responsibility. I think the state needs to act on this first. Second is that there are some constitutional issues with this and that is that I believe that this actually creates a special class of citizen. So within the city of Cheyenne, if, if you enact this ordinance, it does actually create a special class of citizen that is that's not allowed, it's, it, this person would be, within the city would be special and unique as opposed to somebody outside the city. So constitutionally, both on the state level and on the federal level, I don't think that that special class of citizen is necessarily allowed. I think those are just some unintended consequences of, of this ordinance, but I do appreciate you guys looking into this and hearing the public comment, so thank you very much. I'd stand for questions if there are any.
Thank you, sir. Please come forward.
Thank you, Max Esdale, I would like to start off.
I didn't catch your last name, Max.
Esdale, that's E S D A L E. First off, Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to start off by expressing my gratitude to the council and to the city attorney and the police chief and fellow citizens. Our last meeting was very educational. Hearing the recognition from the council of the benefits of medical marijuana was more than I anticipated. However, our hopes were ultimately dashed primarily due to concerns around the potential confusion and the constitutionality of conflicting state statute and municipal code. The city attorney clarified this is not decriminalization strictly speaking, since state law would still apply. And the police chief explained that officers simply have to check another box. With those points in mind. Uh, with those points in mind, I'd like to reframe, reframe this as what it is, not decriminalization, but de-municipalization, if that's a word. Uh, please correct me if I'm mistaken for city attorney, but uh, there's no constitutional requirement for cities to mirror every law that's in state statute for them to be enforced. Uh, how many state laws are absent from municipal code that are still enforced locally? It's many. Uh, I propose that we give the police the clear advice to check the other box. Uh, the reason for this is, we should recognize that this change is not purely symbolic. There are real budgetary and jurisdictional impacts that come from removing this unwanted and unjust law from local code. The people of Cheyenne clearly don't want this decriminalization by at least four to one margin, judging by the comments and by polls. And if the state wants to maintain that marijuana possession or consumption are crimes, let the state adjudicate. Let them shoulder more of the costs involved and save the overloaded overloaded municipal court system the cost of hundreds of cases per year. This is not merely symbolic. Budgets are moral documents of our beliefs and our priorities. If the state believes that this should be illegal despite what the overwhelming majority of citizens want, let them pay for it. Let them bear as much of the burden as possible, or change the law to reflect the popular will and preference. Thank you again.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Mayor Collins, uh, members of the city council, my name is Rhea Parsons. I'm the um, Prevention and Education Director for the Wyoming Association of Sheriffs and Chiefs of Police. I more just wanted to give a face to a name, I provided the booklets to you last week on the impact of high potency THC that I think all of you received, that came from our, our organization, so I just wanted to let um introduce myself and let you know that that came from us. Uh, the Wyoming Association of Sheriffs and Chiefs of Police has been providing resources and education around the subject of marijuana for about eight years now. And I just wanted to let you know that I can be a resource to you in terms of finding information, what other municipalities have done, what's the science, what's the education? I'm happy to pull that together for you. I'm a lifelong resident of Wyoming, but just about a three-year resident of Cheyenne, so I am here and at your service if there's any questions I may answer. Um, on a final note, I would just um echo what was said earlier. From the chiefs and sheriff's standpoint, um, marijuana remains a Schedule One drug and is illegal on a state and federal level. And so an ordinance that runs contrary to that would probably put you in the weeds more than you would care for, so. Anyway, with that, um, that's all I have to offer at this time.
Thank you, appreciate you being here. Sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, City Council, my name is Matt Freeman. I'm in opposition to this, uh, the primary reason is the circumventing of the rule of law. Um, so it's already been pointed out that on Wednesday, we discovered that there was in fact a different box to check. I'm curious if anybody has bothered to check with uh the district court to see w- w- you know, if, if they're willing to shoulder the burden that you're going to hand off to them by not, you know, fulfilling the law that's already on the books. A- and really, as a constitutionalist, you know, the onus of this is on you guys. If, if you disagree with the law, then you should sue the state. And you should take that up with them and say, this is, this law isn't correct, and we, we disagree with you. Um, to uh follow up on a different point that was made. I believe there's been a referendum on the books in Wyoming for at least the last six years. Uh, the petition drive to legalize uh marijuana, and they've never met the signature requirement, so I, I'm not still convinced citizens of Wyoming are, are for this. If anything, I would say it, it appears to be contrary, that if you can't get the signatures, then you can't get it on the ballot, then apparently the majority disagree. So uh, just food for thought, um, you know, there again, uh, the letter of the law says this is illegal. Um, I, I don't believe the federal constitution gives them the authority. Um, I, I'm not sure the Wyoming constitution gives them the authority, which does take it back to a local right and an individual right, so. You know, lots of stuff here, but really need to do the legal recourse to get this resolved, thanks.
Sir. Welcome.
Hello. My name is AJ Gold, I spoke last week.
AJ Gold?
Yes, and I'm here to change my opinion, um. While I do stand by everything I said about cannabis last week, I think this issue needs to be taken to the state level. I don't believe it's something that the city should really be focusing on, if we do want to focus on it, then we need to talk to our representatives, have meetings with them, and keep this conversation going. I personally do believe that it honestly is such a remedial thing now, so many states have legalized it. It's time to, because there are so many benefits, other states have seen the benefits, we would benefit so much from it. Not only just with the money we would get from it, but the jobs we would create, the uh amount of money we will be able to spend on our roads and highways and things that we need fixed within our state. Um, but personally, I do think that this is a state issue, not necessarily a city issue.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, and uh, yes, you did miss an interesting meeting on Wednesday night. I was here and one of the people who did testify in support of this uh change in the ordinance. First off, there was a lot of talk about.
Would you identify yourself?
I am so sorry. Uh, Kathleen F. Peterson, and I am a, a, a resident of Cheyenne, sorry about that. Anyway, first off, there was a testimony about people who, well, when I was young and I took marijuana and blah, blah, blah. And from what I understand, this ordinance has to do with adults, it does not have to do with changing anything for dealing with minors if they are using uh marijuana illegally. The second thing is, um, there's a whole lot of talk about that form and that box. And I really, I guess I'm confused about it, I used to work for the state and I prepared forms. And I found out if a form was a problem, you changed the form. So if, if, if they're saying that you have to remove one box, and there's only one box left to check by the law enforcement, then it has to go to municipal court. Why is there not another box on the ticket that says this is a warning? We don't want to see you again, so can't you add another box? Because it sounded like this would tie the officer's hands in what they could choose to do with somebody that they came in contact with that had marijuana. So I'm saying is put another box on there that's saying, this is the special box that says, we're going to let you go on your way, we're not going to send you to court, you're not going to have to appear in front of a judge, but don't come back again and, and give them a warning, so that's my comments. I, I think that there is a lot of discussion around this, I think there are things the city can do if they choose to do it. I do think that we want to give law enforcement more tools, not less, and so I don't know what the form looks like, but let's take a look at that, if that would help solve anything, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Council.
Um, I'd like to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance.
Share your name first.
I'm sorry, my name is Arnold Strayer, I do live here in Cheyenne.
Arnold, I didn't catch your last name.
Strayer, S T R A Y R.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, I've spoken to retired police officers who've worked for the Cheyenne Police Department, another man who was a reserve with the police department. And they have told me that many times if someone is charged with this at all, it's written into county court. So I don't know whether studies have been done to see how much is actually spent by the city to prosecute these crimes. But another issue that arose is, there's at least one municipality that I'm familiar with that has had to retire their drug dogs. Drug dogs are not trained to detect an amount of marijuana or any other drug. It's just the presence of that particular drug. So if the uh, if, if you have to retire your drug dogs because they keep alerting on marijuana when you don't want them to, and rehire, not rehire, but retrain new dogs, that's going to cost the city a lot of money. It takes a lot of money to train a drug, drug dog, so that's another cost that we should look at. Another thing that concerns me is, we've all heard the phrase gateway drug that marijuana leads to the use of other drugs that are sometimes far more serious. I think that is true, but it's also true, if you look at the state of Colorado, that it began with this kind of an ordinance and then moved on. Now we have all kinds of drugs authorized as legal in the state of Colorado. I don't want to go there. So I oppose this ordinance. Um, I myself have twenty-six years of experience as a deputy sheriff, and I currently work for a company, private company that has a contract with the United States Marshal Service, so I'm still around law enforcement a great deal, I've been there for almost ten years. So I would just urge you not to do this.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to speak tonight? All right, last call. All right, we'll close public comment, and we will go to uh Mr. Johnson for a uh motion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, the motion to approve on second reading failed at the committee of the whole meeting, therefore, there is no recommendation. However, for the sake of discussion, I move to approve on second reading.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Royble. Comments for members of the governing body. Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins through you. Um, first and foremost, uh, I would like to say I appreciate all the conversation, um, and the uh emails and the engagement that we've had on this topic. Um, whether people were for or against, I think everybody um had valid um information that they wanted to share and concerns, um, regardless of what their stance was. I think that the, some of the confusion has been that um, the box on the form is that, my understanding is that the, our law enforcement is required to uphold the constitution for which they've been sworn to uphold that. And so if they're not giving a ticket that would be able to be seen in city court, that then they would um be required to give a ticket that would be seen in a higher court. And, and my understanding is in that higher court that um that is not where you can simply pay a ticket and not show up, that you actually have to go and um take a day off work and appear in court. Um, and then you have court fines as, as well. So the other piece of that is that, um, my understanding is that the state statute has changed that such, and is such that after three tickets in that higher court, um, the fourth ticket would become a felony. And I'm really hesitant um to take individuals who, especially those eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds that are, are young, young adults, and um put them into a situation that would permanently impact their future employability, their future career options, and their lives um because of a felony record. Um, so if for that reason, um, I will be a no vote tonight.
Mr. Escobar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, just would address one more comment was made last week where someone thought we'd be able to get some tax dollars off of it. So that's one of the differences between legalization and decriminalization is what we're talking about here. To know we would not get any tax dollars for it. But however, I just kind of wonder how many dollars from Cheyenne residents are currently paying for infrastructure and education in Colorado. Uh, to what degree that is, I don't know, but uh, uh, we are.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson.
So as far as decriminalization, as was stated, it just removed it from the municipal court, and that's all it did. Unfortunately, if you go back to the President of the United States, or if it was just a simple marijuana possession ticket even in their federal, that person's going to be pardoned on that as well, so that even took out the US Attorney's part of it. So this left it just going to Sylvia, that, you know, and I wasn't involved in the conversation on Friday when the city attorney met with the district attorney in regards to this, but Sylvia is completely aware, I know she reads a paper pretty religiously, she knew that this was coming forward, she hasn't reached out to me. But yeah, I'm sure it would, you know, on her part, it would probably be a burden. And then, but that is district attorney, that would come back to her on whether or not she wanted to hear that. Another thing that was kind of missed in the dialogue, I mean, everybody focused so much on the box that, you know, the chief of police said that most possession tickets and paraphernalia tickets are actually lumped in with more severe charges. And that's one of the problems I have with the American justice system, is basically a grocery list of charges that's added out that are pretty much pled out, you know, for the major charge. I've always used the example, it's like, well, if I'm going to face two thousand dollars in fees for all my lesser charges, but I'm looking at seven years in jail for my major charge, why wouldn't I plead the other way and say, I'll pay the two thousand bucks and, you know, forego the the major charge, I mean, just, you know, that's just my, you know, philosophy on the American justice system, does it pertain to here? Kind of, but not really. But even though Councilman Layborn is um not here tonight, he very, he brought up a very interesting uh comment that is marijuana decriminalization, or is marijuana legal in the city of Cheyenne? Yes and no, it just basically came, you know, that was, you know, once again, you know, I've heard the cart before the horse analogy that, you know, all of a sudden people are going to be lighting up or hitting their pins and stuff during the Fridays in the depot, you know, it's like, if you're going to make yourself a target, guess what, you're going to get arrested. It's still illegal in the state of Wyoming. What this only meant is that you weren't going to be charged in municipal court. That it went, and pretty much at this point, not in a federal court either, this would go strictly to the DA.
Any other comments for members of the governing body? All right, hearing none. Uh, motion before us is uh to repeal our uh, our codes on uh marijuana, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
I see the hands of the no. Mr. Seagrave. Dr. Rennie. Mr. White. Mr. Cook. Dr. Aldridge and myself. The motion fails. Next item, please.
Number eleven, resolution authorizing the city treasurer to dis- discharge uncollectible debts pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four hundred and five oh two.
All right, we'll go out to the audience, is there anybody in the audience want to speak to uh our effort to discharge some uncollectible debts? Miss Smith.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and Council. I'm Renee Smith, Grants Manager. Before you is a resolution to discharge uncollectible debts from the City of Cheyenne Housing Loans Fund that was put in place for programs such as the home program that the city's Housing and Community Development Office managed over the last few decades. These home dollars were used to provide assistance to low and very low-income homeowners for necessary repairs and rehabilitation of their home. Had required that homes receiving this assistance remain affordable owned over time, which we refer to as their affordability period. So mortgages that varied based on income were placed on their properties. For example, if the home dollar investment was less than fifteen thousand dollars, the length of affordability was five years. As you can see from the provided attachment, the dates far exceed five years. Over time, eight mortgages have remained on the city's books, some going as far back as the nineteen eighties and nineties. In an effort to force collection, staff met with the city attorney many years ago, who advised that their only recourse was to hire a foreclosure attorney. At that time, the city felt that attorney fees would quickly exceed any amount recovered. And going after low and very low-income residents did not, was, was not something that the city at that time was willing to um pursue. Previous city treasurers continued to keep these mortgages on the books with no resolution. So last May, our department met with the mayor and the city attorney to provide an update on the twenty-seven outstanding mortgages being maintained by the Housing and Community Development Office. DAF spent many hours at the county clerk's office deciphering decades' worth of housing transactions and notes. We implemented a new policy to release any mortgages that had met the affordability period. We restructured our contracts, and now we just have these eight remaining mortgages. We have determined that these repayable loan debts will not be recovered due to death of the homeowner of foreclosure, or they can't afford to pay. Staff is requesting approval from the governing body to discharge the City of Cheyenne's Housing Loans Fund uncollectible debts in the amount of sixty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. And I'm here for questions.
Thank you, does anyone have a question for our staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
Have we not, or did we not at least attach a lien to these properties?
Yes, sir, that's what these were, these were all liens, and, and while the liens, and they were not first mortgages, that most of them were second mortgages. So over time, these houses have bounced all over, and our mortgages, whatever with the system, with the county, either, they just never got picked up. So sometimes we'd be notified, sometimes we wouldn't.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Aldridge.
Um, Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, I just continue to be frustrated that we, I mean, and, and not with our city staff, because I think our staff has done their due diligence. But I think there's an example on there of an individual who the house has been foreclosed on and she's still remaining in the home and and I think it's been for years. Actually, it's not just like in the last two months or something. So, um, I know that the city treasurer has assured us that we can continue to try and collect on these. Um, I don't know how successful that will be, but, um, I just chafe at the idea that we make these mortgages and these, or second mortgages in good faith and that people fail to hold up their end of the bargain. So for that reason, I'm going to be a no vote just on the matter of principle tonight.
Anybody else have comments for staff, questions? Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in the, else in the audience? Not easy for me to say. Anyone else in the audience want to speak to these, uh, um, uncont- or uncollectible debts? Hearing none. Mr. White, do you have a motion for us?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to adopt and I so move.
Seceded by Mr. Royble. Comments from members of the governing body. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Resolution is adopted with Dr. Rennie and Dr. Aldridge. The doctor, doctor, no.
Next item is number fourteen, resolution authorizing Paid Health LLC to provide advocacy and financial case management services for eligible specialty prescription drugs through alternative funding programs effective July first, twenty twenty three. Call phone from March thirteenth, twenty twenty three.
President Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, once again, I did have a conflict on this, so I'll recuse myself.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any one in the audience like to speak to this, um, change in our prescription drug program? All right, hearing none. Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to adopt and I so move.
Seceded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body.
Mr. Cook. Mr. Mayor, um, I'm wondering if we happen to have, uh, any information and I'll let you direct, you can answer this question.
Please.
Certainly from your staff, you can, you can decide that. Um, I'm wondering how, how many, uh, employees that this change, uh, would impact? If, if we have that information, you know, I don't, obviously no names or anything like that, but, uh, is it appropriate for us to find out how many employees that this would impact?
Mr. Hawes with HIPAA, can we, can we give a, an answer to that or not?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Darren Hess, HR. Uh, I can't give you the exact answer. It's less than one percent of the, of our insured folks. And we have over a thousand insured employees, dependents, spouses. But it's, it's going to be your, your top specialty drugs that will be, uh, that will look to offer some rebates, some alternative funding and support to get those costs reduced. So if you look at one percent, we're talking eight, nine, ten people.
Thank you. Uh, follow up, Mayor.
Please.
Through you, if I may, uh, to Darren. Um, so I'm just wondering, um, again, they're not employed with, uh, the city Cheyenne, but full disclosure, I do have family members that that would probably honestly fit into this, um, this type of medication, this, this type of stuff. So this is something that I would be very, very concerned with frankly. Um, and I'm just wondering if there's been any preliminary, and again, if, if this can be answered. Um, I'm just wondering, Darren, if there have been preliminary, uh, conversations with the employees that, that may be impacted by this. And again, just if our reasoning has, has been provided and, and have we taken into account any of their concerns? Uh, because my understanding again is that employees do have some, some some pretty large concerns, um, just regarding the confidentiality of this, just really the, for lack of a better term, just, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Just, uh, uh, very confidential information, not poking and prodding. I, I'm struggling to find the word, but, um, invade, thank you. Um, that folks just feel that this, uh, this entire process or the way it's going to be is going to be very invasive and and just full disclosure, I'm, I, I definitely plan on being a no about this tonight. I, I just have a lot of issues with it, but I'm just wondering. I think it would be beneficial to the rest of the council and maybe those, uh, here in person and, and online if, if we've if we've worked with these folks at all as far as, you know, preparing them for this, explaining the reasoning behind it. I, I just think it'd be beneficial to hear what is, what has been done.
Mr. Hawes.
There you are. To Councilman Cook. The, there hasn't been any communication at this time. There's a lot of PHI information out here that we're talking about with these employees. I don't, I don't know if they're employees or, or dependents, spouses. The plan is, once this resolution was approved, we'll build it into the Blue Cross document. At that time, we're going to start reaching out to those individuals and, uh, and holding their hand and help them through the process. It is a, it is a lengthy application process and it, that's dependent on which manufactured drug it is. So it could be hundred and twenty different applications, but we will help them, paid health will help them, concierge services with, with Nova benefits will be there to help to hold their hand and help them complete this process.
Mr. White.
Just, uh, uh, one other thing, uh, just for my colleague from Ward Two's benefit. We were told, um, at finance committee, um, there was some some good discussion on this. And when you talk about concierge service, it's a one-on-one concierge service. So that means the representative from the company talking directly to the uh, employee that would be affected. And I think the total number of employees that we had seen would, would be about between ten and eleven. So there's a one-on-one concierge service that comes with, uh, this program.
Well, I
Mr. Cook.
I do have a, a follow-up question, whether it be for, uh, Mr. Hess or for my colleague from Ward One. Um, so I guess that's sort of a basic question. You, you jodged, jodged a question for me and that, that would be. So is this a situation, Darren, where we're going to be making this change and then the folks find out about it?
If, if the resolution goes through, we'll start notifying those individuals. This doesn't go into effect till July one. But we'll start the, the coaching, the mentoring, preparing three months in advance.
So the employees don't know about this, this point, that, that, that could have, that it could impact.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know who those employers are either. I don't want to know. So.
Okay. Thanks. That's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Eric Collins through you. I was, I guess I was under the impression that, um, the information has been out there that we were discussing this and the list of, I, if I remember correctly, it's between twelve and twenty drugs that are the top most costly drugs that were name brand drugs and that, um, that that list actually was out in uh, out amongst the employees. Is that not accurate?
Uh, it, that, that information's gone out and dispersed to the employee benefit committee. And there's members of the police, uh, CPA, buyer. So there's a, there's a number of representatives that the committee meets and then disperses this information.
Okay, so it's not like, uh, employees who are paying attention to benefits and that type of thing it have, are going to be completely blindsided by this.
What, what they, correct. What they want to know is, is which are drugs, which are those specialty drugs? Because if we release that information, employees could kind of say, oh, I know who that is.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That person was on Humira. So we, we, we haven't released that.
Okay, thank you.
Based on PHI.
Mr. Escobar.
Mr. Mayor, I did express my concern about this, uh, the first time it came through and as well as on finance committee last week. That main thing that concerns me is it takes into account household income. So the employee their spouse would have to divulge their financial information to the not the city, but I guess Nobel, right? And, uh, that was one of the invasive issues that I had with this that caused me to vote no the last time and I'll continue to be a no.
Any other comments from members of the governing body or questions for staff? Thank you, Darren. Oh, Dr. Aldridge.
I'm sorry, just a quick follow-up, Mayor Collins. Um, can you remind us of what the dollar amount is that we're hoping to, um, identify or to, um, save by, through this mechanism?
Yeah, this will save the city self-funding plan a little over five hundred thousand. Half a million, yes.
Five hundred thousand dollars per year?
Per year.
So if we are voting no against this, it's a half a million dollars per year that we could see the impact of.
Uh, that is correct. And then that will obviously play a, a part on the, in print, employee premiums come up.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from, from governing body? All right, we have a motion and a second authorizing for, due to the paid health. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
I thought, Mr. Seagrave. Oh, did I light it down a little?
We did. I apologize. Sorry.
Madam Clerk did.
That is correct.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Um, again, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Seagrave uh, to authorize paid health to help us with this, uh, prescription drug program. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Right, Mr. uh, Escobell and Mr. Cooker knows the resolution is adopted with Mr. Johnson being conflicted.
Next item is nineteen D, professional services agreement between the city of Cheyenne and TDSI, the Design Studio Incorporated, or the gymnastics facility site development, engineering and architectural plans project.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to the city's plan to hire an engineer to help us with a gymnastics building? Good evening, Mr. White.
Mr. uh, Mayor, through you, Mike White. Um, I was at finance committee when they talked about this and I guess, um, I made the point that the voters had rejected, uh, the two million dollars for the, uh, part of the last voting section. And it's not that I don't agree with having a gymnastics center, but Mr. the head of Parks and Rec brought up the building option out there on, uh, Eighth Drive and I went out and looked at it last week. So my question is, um, is that rec, is that center that used to be a gymnastics center, is that completely off the books to even consider at this time?
Mr. White, um, just to make sure I understand, you're talking about the privately held building in the Point, that is.
Yeah, sixty seven, uh, twenty five, Eighth Drive, yes, sir.
Sure. So we went and toured that building and it's a beautiful facility. Um, right now we have four hundred and some kids in our program. We have, I think last I saw two hundred and sixty kids in our waiting list. And, uh, we felt like that building could hold maybe seven hundred students total. Um, and so I asked for the, uh, our coaches and our gymnastics staff to come in and meet with us and talk about the building to see what their thoughts were. And one of the questions I asked is, you know, we have, we could, we have seven hundred kids now, but what could we grow that, that program to? And they shared with us, they thought they could get to fourteen hundred gymnasts and two to three hundred, uh, kids in cheer. And that, that building, uh, that you went and visited would only handle about half of that. And so if we're going to spend two million dollars, I wanted to make sure that it would at least meet not only our current needs, but our future needs also. And so we made the decision to look into building our own facility large enough to, to be able to handle all of the kids in Cheyenne who want to be part of the gymnastics program.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, one other comment or question, uh, as far as, uh, what Mr. Jason Sanchez said at finance committee about how they would fund that. Um, and I guess my question is, I've looked, done some extensive research on how the American Rescue funding through the federal government would allow, um, how to fund things. And so my question would also be, does, um, the gymnastics building that would like to be built? Do the guidelines or the restrictions from the federal government allow the city to use funding like that for the construction of that building?
Short answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I will, I would just like to comment also, sir, you talked about the vote that happened on the six penny sales tax.
Yes.
You know, that wasn't a vote whether we should build a gymnastics facility. That was a vote whether we should use the six penny sales tax to pay for it. We were really clear about that. We sold our building and we have always had the intent to, to build a new facility. Um, and just for the audience, we sold our building because the school district needed our building. They're going to tear down a grade school and the only place they have to build the new one, um, they want to keep the school open while they build the new one, is our old site. And so we sold them that building. We'll use the funding from that plus other sources to build the new one. Um, but we weren't, there wasn't a referendum on gymnastics. The referendum was, do they want to use that funding source to pay for it? We've always been very clear that this is something we were, we intended to do.
Well, I guess I must have read proposition eleven wrong then, because I thought that's it was specifically for the use to build a, uh, building out there next to the ice.
No, sir, you're, you're not incorrect about that, but it wasn't, should we do it? It should we use six penny sales tax to pay for two million of the cost of that? And, um, and unfortunately or fortunately, depending on your point of view, uh, it did not pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak? All right, hearing none. Mr. White, do you have a motion for us?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve and an amount not to exceed two hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars and I so move.
Seceded by Mr. Escobell. Comments from members of the governing body.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
I had this pulled from the incentive agenda there. I had three points I wanted to make. Um, two of them have already been made. I've been asked, uh, you know, why are we building this or why are we doing this? When, um, there's a empty gymnastic facility in the Point and you and Mr. Director Sanchez have already explained that existing facility will not meet the future demand of our program. So we do have to have something larger. Um, secondly, I did want to point out that, um, our interpretation, I think, is correct, is that the voter said, no, we will not tax ourselves to build this facility. They weren't asked if, if we could build it or could not build it. Um, but the other reason I wanted to pull it in, looking through the contract, there were a couple of issues that, that bothered me. And I will probably vote no for those reasons. And that is, first of all, the con, the consultant is asking for seventy cents a mile on vehicles when the governmental rate is fifty-five point five cents. And the other thing is the consultant is adding a ten percent markup to any of their expenses. I think they should have their sp- expenses covered in the contract, but I don't think they should make a profit on it. So um, I would hope that we would look at that in, in future contracts, because I don't think those two things are right.
Thank you, Dr. Rennie. All right, anybody else in the governing body? Please come forward. Welcome, Mr. Byers.
Mr. Mayor, Randy Byers with the Design Studio. I, I just wanted to address, uh, Dr. Rennie's questions. Um, I, I think the document that Dr. Rennie is looking at is our standard rate schedule. Um, and it does, uh, does indicate seventy cents a mile for mileage um, as a standard rate to our clients. However, we do not charge for mileage in town. This is an in-town project. There would never be any charge for that. Um, and as far as the expenses, um, again, on this particular project, I don't expect there to be expenses that would, would fall under reimbursable expenses, uh, category. Um, those are, uh, typically, um, uh, expenses for travel out of town, for housing, mileage, meals. When a project requires that, this project is not of that nature.
Thank you. Dr. Rennie, do you have any?
No, I mean, I, I just, then it shouldn't have been included in this, in the contract as presented to us.
Thank you. Other comments from members of the governing body? Comments? All right, we have, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, um, I'm, I'm definitely going to support this tonight. Um, you know, I was, I was part of the group, uh, with yourself, uh, Mr. Seagrave, several of, of our other, um, colleagues, uh, who did tour the, the facility, uh, in my neighborhood. Uh, much like Mr. White, I thought the exact same thing, uh, initially, you know, this is, this is sort of tailor-made to, to fill our needs. Um, you know, and, and how couldn't it, right? I mean, you, you know, we walked into that blank space and it, and it looks, it looks very big, um, frankly. Um, but it is rather antiquated, quite honestly. Um, and I think there, there also, even if we would have, have done it, there, there, there would have potentially been some costly, uh, retrofitting, uh, and upgrading that wouldn't, would have needed to be done. Um, you know, quite honestly, I, I am very
You know, quite honestly, I I am very supportive. I can understand the the confusion as to. Well, you know, we voted it down on the on the ballot. As as Dr. Rennie and 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 yourself, Mayor, put it very eloquently. It was just, you know, the question whether or not we we used a six penny, you know, funds to do it. Our community needs these type of things. It needs, you know, basketball courts, it needs. You know, for crying out loud, I mean, you know, we are, we are. Working with the the school district and other providers to to house us now. We don't own our own facilities. At some point, we have to start buying our own facilities, building our own facilities. And taking care of these things. Mayor, have you, as you have talked to us over the last, you know. Well, the the time you've been in office. At some point, we're no longer probably going to be able to partner with the school district for a lot of these things. That's just, that's just going to happen at some point where. We're not going to be able to to barter and and borrow gyms and borrow facilities to 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 house. To house our 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 program, so. At some point, we need to do this. We need to take a stand and build these amenities for our for our community and and. I'm going to support this tonight. My kids are long gone as far as being able to use this type of facility. But, you know, we need this, and I hope I hope my colleagues will support this. It is definitely something that that Cheyenne and Laramie County is in desperate need of.
Other comments? Doctor Aldridge.
Mayor Collins for you. I have been rather conflicted on this, quite honestly, because I. I know that. There are people that, you know, question the wisdom of spending this amount of money on. A gymnastics facility for basically a one sport. Program, but I think that when you look at the number of young people in our community and you look at the number of young families coming into our community. And the growth that we're experiencing that. And it really, when you think about the weather conditions that we have in Wyoming, here we are in March and it's still snowing outside. That we just need that indoor space and it's been more and more difficult since COVID to be able to work. Even though the school district has been a great partner, they have limited space as well, and a lot of their programs are growing and their schools are. Enrollment is growing, so we do have one private entity here in town that offers. Some indoor gym space with the Beast Foundation. But I think that when we talk about economic development, we're in. Wanting to be able to bring events to our community and have our students and children be able to compete. Right here in our community without having to go out of town to competitions and to meets to gymnastics meets. And it gives us the flexibility we need to be able to schedule our own facilities. Being at the mercy of somebody else's building and access to those buildings can be really difficult. And so for that reason, I'll be supporting this tonight.
Any other comments from the governing body? All right, hearing none. We have a professional services agreement to do the engineering for gymnastics building. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Dr. Rennie is a no. The professional service agreement is approved.
Next item is twenty A, appointments of Elizabeth Hagler to the.
Actually, I think we have number F or letter F of nineteen.
I skipped one.
I think there's some people waiting all day to talk to us about this.
Nineteen F lease agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Meals on Wheels of Cheyenne Incorporated for a portion. Of the property located at twenty fifteen South Greeley Highway.
All right, before I go to the audience, I just wanted to just say a couple of words. Last Wednesday, the twenty second. The Board of Directors of the Cheyenne Animal Shelter voted to approve the basic framework that will lead to a new three year contract. To continue our fifty year partnership for animal sheltering services. I have two thoughts on this. One is, it's good news. But with the need. With this this news, I guess the need for a new lease is probably moot. There is probably no need now to have a metro animal shelter. And the second thing is, is I really feel badly for our partners at Meals on Wheels. They agreed to lease a building to us for five years and and when I added up the lease payments, it was three hundred and eighty four thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. And when you're a nonprofit group like that, that's a lot of money that would have done a heck of a lot of good for their nonprofit. And I'm really hopeful that they'll be able to find a tenant that will backfill those revenues in the next couple of months. And the last thing I want to do is I wanted to recognize Eric Fountain and his team. You know, when when we got into the situation, we asked him, or actually, that's probably not fair. I asked him. To stand up a metro animal shelter, if you know what that would take, what that would cost. His team has worked really hard full time for. A month now to to try to make that happen. And while this agreement is probably the best thing that could happen for everyone involved, including the animals. I just wanted to tell Eric and his team how proud I am of the work that they did, because I know they worked really hard to to get to that point. So at this time, I would ask the governing body to vote down the lease agreement. We have an agreement in place. The Shelter Director and I have have agreed to start meeting on a weekly basis to start working the details of the the contract. That we can be ready to have a new three year contract before this governing body. Before the first of June, so that we can get it approved before the new contract would would go into effect, which I think might be a first for us in a while. It seems like we're always in arrears on that contract, so and with that, I'd open it up to the public if anybody in the public wants to speak to. The lease agreement that we have with Meals on Wheels. Anyone in the audience? All right, hearing none. Mr. White, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve and I so move.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, this item dies for the lack of a second. Next item, please.
Now we can go to twenty three A.
There you go.
Points of Elizabeth Hagler to the Housing and Community Development Advisory Council. And Mackenzie Howard to the Community Action of Laramie County Board of Directors.
All right, we have two appointments, and as usual, the mayor does not get to vote on appointments, but I would entertain a motion, please.
I would so move.
Move my Dr. Aldridge. Seconded by Mr. White. All those in favor of the appointments, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? Those two appointments are approved and we appreciate their service.
Voucher report.
Anyone in the audience or on the governing body want to speak to the vouchers? Hearing none, next item, please.
Revenue report.
And one in the audience or the governing body want to speak to the revenue report? The part is we have some and it's up a little higher from last year, so this is a good thing. All right, next item, please.
Announcement of a public hearing to be held April tenth, twenty twenty three at six P M in City Council Chambers, twenty one O one O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. And via electronic conference meeting for a bar and grill liquor license application filed with the City Clerk's Office for Aces Range LLC. Doing business as Aces Range, fifteen O five Pioneer Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Announcement of a public hearing to be held April tenth, twenty twenty three at six P M in City Council Chambers, twenty one O one O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. And via electronic conference meeting for a winery permit application filed with the City Clerk's Office. For the Blue Stem Wine House LLC, doing business as the Blue Stem Wine House. Nineteen O nine Warren Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Announcement of a public hearing to be held April tenth, twenty twenty three at six P M. In City Council Chambers, twenty one O one O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. And via electronic conference meeting to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming Statute fifteen dash one dash four O two. Exists for about one point two nine acres of land at five two two four Ridge Road, located west of Ridge Road between Jackson Street. And Douglas Street, other business.
All right, we're open for other businesses. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to the governing body under other business? Good evening.
Good evening.
Will you pull that microphone down in front of you? There you go.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself, of course. John Franklin.
Good evening, Mayor Collins and City Council Members. I'll go much slower this time. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council. Situation between City Cheyenne Animal Shelter has provided a valuable learning experience in the basis for the study. Of Master of Public Administration Crisis of Organizations class. Thank you very much. According to friends, and all crises are preceded by early warning signals, both weak and strong. But the signals have to be transmitted to the right people, and then they have to know what to do from there. There are plenty of signals during this situation. I'm hopeful that the entities involved take the time to pause, reflect. Debrief and strategize to prevent a similar occurrence in the future. Don't let this learning opportunity be overlooked. Contractual roles and responsibility delivers deliverables and outcomes. Along with specific timelines need to be clearly documented in contracts. In addition, it does not appear the liaison component of the current contract worked as intended. This is an opportunity. Is this an opportunity to consider an alternative? To that issue, there are professional arbitrators who. Are third party independents who could provide benefits during this type of negotiation. Regarding the lease, now not an issue, thank you. The unintended consequences that may have impacted Meals on Wheels program would have been devastating as unintended consequences usually are. And I I understand there's a loss of revenue there, but if you've lost your reputation, it it doesn't matter how much that money was. Wouldn't it be great in business and in our private lives if we could survey the horizon for signals of impending problems? This method would would prevent problems and it takes. And it takes a lot of time to look for something that may never occur. We just wait until it's upon us and we meet the challenge at the time. I would add that Seager's approach appears to be forward thinking. Establish your partnerships before the crisis. Receive media training and speak with compassion, concern. And empathy not only for your cause, but for the others involved in the crisis. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak? All right, we'll close public comment and go to the governing bodies. Anyone in the governing body like?
Mr. Johnson. Okay, so hey, I love that Ben Hornak actually said I did overkill on a public comment on Wednesday night. I actually take that as a great compliment. You also will notice that there's not a lot of people in the audience that were here on Wednesday today, and so I wanted. To kind of the public to know kind of why. Is when they went out to congregate in the lobby, a lot of them basically said that when they looked at the governing body. They pretty much looked at us as, well, I guess we're outlaws now, so why should we come back because we're outlaws? You got to think of the topic that they all came forward to speak against. There was kind of a reason that I emphasized about just saying that you were from the City of Cheyenne and not state your address because that really wasn't required. These people did come in front of this governing body and a lot of them admitted to breaking the law. And so you have to admit, I mean, it's scary enough coming up to these podiums and the butterflies in your stomach. Can you imagine coming up to this governing body at this podium in front of the police department and pretty much saying, I'm guilty? Like, that took a lot of courage, and I actually respect them for standing by their convictions. I really do appreciate civic engagement, especially of that magnitude. And it kind of proved when one of the speakers said that eighty seven percent in a Wyoming, a University of Wyoming study said. That eighty seven percent of Wyomingites would support a medicinal thing if it was on the on a ballot. As what was kind of discussed tonight, petition process in Wyoming is extremely flawed. You not only have to get the amount of signatures, you have to get them in specific districts as well, so a lot of people. Aren't really even, you know, like, take example in Laramie County, the Air Force Base can vote in our elections. They can't sign a petition, so right away, even in Laramie County, your petition drive is is mute. And so that's one of the things I did, talk to the legislators that were here after the fact was, you know, making changes to the petition process, so. Not only just for decriminalization or legalization of marijuana, but many things. There's so many things in Wyoming that can be handled. You know, if it was put in front of the voters, but right now our petition process is extremely flawed. So I do want to tell the people that came and spoke on Wednesday night, even though you felt that your voice wasn't heard on Wednesday night, it actually was. And there were so many people, I've never seen such a diverse crowd than what we saw on Wednesday night here. Every, you know, from a kid that was basically probably just over twenty one, the people in their eighties coming to speak on this. It was across the board. And it was, it was the most diverse crowd I've ever seen here, and, you know, not even on virtual. And so I just want to tell you, please don't lose faith in the civic process. Your voice was heard. Even though the vote didn't necessarily go your way on this topic, I do encourage you to all follow along with, you know, what us. County Commission, your state legislators do, do, you bring a lot of valid comments. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight to talk about vouchers, but Mr. Ridgway even showed up and had a question for law enforcement, which I had to kind of tell him we weren't going to follow the other business rules. I had to false another type of decorum, so it was a very, very good meeting. I really do appreciate, and I do encourage people to please. Stay civically engaged on any topic that you feel passionate about, and if for any reason you think you can do a better job than us. I encourage you to run. Twenty twenty four is not that far away.
Anybody else under other business on the governing body? Well, thank you, everyone. With that, we're adjourned.